Welcome, we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for coming again, everybody. Thanks for coming out. I will start with number one, approve the agenda, make any additions, deletions, or corrections. We have one addition, which is the pay request number six, which is in front of you, for SL contracting, for the $248,443.81. So we'll add that to E2 on the consent agenda. And then I have to add to the closed session, the 2017 Third, Fourth, and Fifth Streets assessment update also, so we'll get to those three, close the session during the attorney's report. Teresa, anything to add?
Hi, I'm not sure if I have anything, no.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Can we pull the last meeting's minutes out and put them under for discussion, new business?
Remember October 25th meetings to new business?
Yes.
Oh, that's G3 minutes from October 25th. Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
One.
Could we put under old business, just a discussion amongst us for the old water tower?
Yep. Okay, so we'll add that number two under old business. All right, I want to take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Big Stan, do I have a second? Thanks, coin. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full same sign, thank you. Number two, the consent agenda, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. I'll make that. Say his coin.
I'll second it.
Second, thanks, Dan. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. For...
Why?
Give some feelings of the thing.
Well, yeah, I've made a mistake last meeting, too. We can't abstain on things unless we have a conflict of interest. So you can vote no.
Okay, yeah, I'll do this both yesterday.
Okay, all right. Kerry's by the zoo. Visitors to the council, we don't have anything. We have public forum. Looks like we have Jerry and Janine. Is that right? Okay. The floor is yours. If you'd like to tell them, state your name and address and what you'd like to share with us.
Janine Henzley, my husband Gary. We live at 101 North Manorville, and we also own 111 West Main, which was a former section of the Old Boothold, that we're going to be opening a restaurant in on Monday.
Open on Monday?
Opening on Monday.
Perfect.
And we're hoping to get a liquor license. We'd like to serve beer and wine only. It's a small restaurant. We don't have the space for a bar, but we'd like everybody to be able to have a glass of wine or some beer with their ribs and pork.
Perfect. That's on our agenda, I believe, for new business number two, so we'll get that one discussed then.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming, and thanks for putting the time and effort and capital into the building.
We worked really hard.
I watch by the bank pretty much every day, all week, and then every weeknight, yeah, you put a lot of time and effort on that.
Well, we've taken the paper off the windows, so you can peek in a little better now.
We look forward to seeing it, so.
Thank you.
All right, attorney's report. We'll go to F, old business, number one, budget discussion. Just a general budget discussion, the department heads and Charlie were busy tonight. I imagine you're hunting, had something to do this week. So if you have any specific questions for any of the department heads, if you can get them email, maybe everybody email Teresa, any specific questions you might have for them, and then we can put that together for them, get it to them, so that way they can come to the next meeting with the managers, and they'll give them some time to put their thoughts together on it, too. So if we can do that, that'd be great for general stuff. And we'll move on to A, the fee schedule, building permits. I know Teresa, you put something, you had a question.
Yes, I did. So I did meet with Brandon, and then we met with Doug, and Nancy put some figures together for us. So what we are charging for building permits now is covering our costs of providing the permits and the process for the building. So what I did to the fee schedule is I just kind of institutionalized the 30% discount that the council had put into place earlier this year. So those are the changes that are highlighted, I believe that's in the packet, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That's the highlight copy, yep.
That are highlighted on that copy of the building permit fees that's in your packet. And then we had also talked about land use fees, and these figures, Doug, are like more in line with Byron's. They're not exactly Byron's, but when you add them all up, they come out about that thing.
Yeah, no, we talked, and there were quite a few of these that I thought were way high, and I think can you get some other input from someone and help out there a little bit, too?
So the land use fees are up a little bit, and we did add the note that it's $300 for the application plus engineering, because in some cases, there's a lot of engineering time that goes into reviewing the preliminary plot, the final plot, the general development plan. And then we added site plan review. That's a new charge, because there's between all of the land use applications and getting to the development agreement, is that what it happened? Somewhere in there. Before we get to the building permit, there can be a site plan review. That was a condition of approval of the final plot, and we hadn't been, we didn't have a mechanism to recover the engineering fees associated with that site plan review. So that is a new fee. And then again, for the planned unit development, we did add the engineering. The, actually, the $20 per lot maybe was previously only attached to the preliminary flat that had one of those things when I checked with Byron, and I'm working with the way they do it.
So we're pretty consistent with our neighbors now?
Yes.
As far as being in line with what, I don't know, and recovering our costs?
Yep.
Any questions for...
No, I'd, I'd, we had a good discussion.
So.
About two hours.
Yeah.
And it just seemed fair for smaller projects, too.
It makes sense, yeah.
You know, with that five-time increment there, it was kind of extreme, you know. No, I was real happy to see this, so.
And now, we don't need any action. Will this be part of our general budget approval later, or do we need to approve this tonight?
We generally approve the fee schedules going to effect January 1st, so when we approve the budget, we can approve it then, because I do also have some changes to the water. Your budget does show an increase to water rates.
Okay, until we approve the budget, you won't know that for sure, I'll update this.
Right.
Okay, all right, so we'll just piggyback this on what the budget is.
When we get that look, yeah.
Okay, thank you for doing that. Thanks for meeting with Teresa on that, too, there.
Update levy summary sheet. That was the one that was...
The next, in the next in the past yet. So this, so then, taking that idea that building permits are now paying for themselves, instead of taking an average of what we have collected over the last four or five years and using that for our budget number, we actually used what we've collected in 2017 to plug that into the budget. So then that gives you some more revenue on the, on the building permit. And then, let's see, there were, so there are three things that play into the levy number that's here, four things. The building permit, there was some money that was in the miscellaneous unallocated category. We reduced that by $140,000. The health insurance increased, instead of being at 30%, which I think was that 8.88 number that you approved for your preliminary levy, was decreased to a 6% increase from a 30% increase. And then we did remove a street position following some conversation with the public works director. So those four things come into play with this, basically, no increase.
Shows us a 100% decrease as it is now. This is obviously before contract negotiations are completed.
Right, right, right.
Okay, thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. I knew we could get there somehow. Now we'll see if we can make that final by the middle of December. So if you have any questions on that, let me know. Any questions for the department heads, and we can get that to them, so that we can get answers back from them at the next meeting. But basically, we took out anything that was a position at as far as personnel, so.
Well, there's two more positions in there, though.
Which ones, please? That was that $140 unallocated.
Oh, okay.
Took the stupid position.
It wasn't actually...
When I read unallocated, I didn't know, okay.
It wasn't actually in there just department, but it was kind of just a placeholder in case we got there.
Okay, well, I know where that, that number came, though.
Yeah, so, and that got us, you know, obviously, I challenged everybody to get as close to zero as we could. If we can do that for our taxpayers, I think that'd be great. So any questions for the department still, give it back, give them this week to Teresa, give them some time to chew on it, and come back in and try to convince us otherwise, or whoever they might need or want to defend that, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yep, good job.
Thank you very much, everybody, for working on that. And thanks, Nancy. I know you've spent a lot of time on that. Number two, old business, Doug, you wanted to add the old water tower discussion there.
Yeah, last meeting, we had a visitor in the council, had a suggestion, and I was just giving the water tower to the historical society.
Yep.
I thought about it. I thought, it isn't going to cost the city anything. Twenty years, you know, there's been a good contract with it, and we haven't heard any scuttle. Now we've been scuttling over all this. I'm just getting any feedback here. We never got to discuss it at all when the idea was brought up. But I'd like to throw it out there. If anyone's got any idea that, to me, it's, we still have it here. I'm sure we can write something up. We can still use it for our city logo, and who would you cost us anything?
I was kind of with you, Doug. I had some thoughts myself. So as far as just a discussion item, I think it's something we can possibly discuss, think about, pros, cons, whatever it might be, as far as the city goes. And now, that, again, would have to be approached to the historical society, because Mr. Orstrom, she's, you know, she's not part of that. She just haters an idea.
I heard it said, and I thought about it, that I'm, you know, I don't want to let it slip by and not say it, and maybe some others think the same way, you know, so.
So I don't know what the cons would be.
How much has the water tower cost the city?
Oh, I would have to look that up. Yeah, I can bring that. If you want to have ongoing discussion, I can bring some more information.
I would just like to know how much it has cost the city and why we would want to spend that kind of money just to give it away.
Plus, if we give it away, who's to say they can't turn around and sell it to somebody? I mean, then, once you give it to somebody, they can do what they want. They can knock it down, and you won't have your...
You can put anything you want in the contract.
Yeah, I'll go.
Just like the property life where they sit down there, they're supposed to be appealed there.
Somebody might want it.
So that's a good question, Lonnie. It'd be interesting to know what the city's put into it.
Yeah, I do have that. I just don't have a question tonight.
So maybe we can get circle back on that. I think it's worth, part of the discussion, as we're trying to come up with a new agreement, or what, you know, that agreement's open, and it can be anything. It can be whatever we come to an agreement to. I guess there definitely something else out there on the table.
I know where it's been built for maintenance, lights and stuff like that, you know, and, I mean, that would be out of our hands.
Right. As far as what we've put into it in the past, that can be part of our, you know, they say that they would want to agree to that, take the property as the historical society property. The city's not going to put anything into it for the next, how many years? You know, then at some point, it may be allocated $2,000 a year for preservation or something, or whatever it might be. I mean, anything can be negotiated in this committee together to determine what's going to happen. So I guess we're talking about. So if you can do that, Teresa, that'd be great. Get back.
Oh, yeah, you know, I had it together for that meeting I had with, you know, years ago, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just have to pull it out again.
Thank you very much. On to G1, new business, number one, the Zumbro River Water Trail.
Yeah, so this has a really, I knew that these discussions were happening. I think they were about on their third meeting when these minutes came out. But I attended a county commissioners' meeting, and one of the commissioners was reporting out that he had been there, and they were interested in including Cassin in this project. It does sound like if Cassin wants to be included in this Zumbro, they have Zumbro River Trail, River Water Trail, that they would be looking for some kind of cash participation to pay for the master plan. That would need to be put together to get this designated as a regional, greater Minnesota regional parker trail. So I wanted to bring it to the council to say, do you want me to start investing some time, meeting with this group? Are you, would you be willing to invest some dollars to participate with this group? Ideally, they would get designation as being regionally significant. They're thinking the water trail and the bike trails that connect to it. You know, Manorville seems to have a bigger stake perhaps than Cassin, but those trails from Manorville come to Cassin. So that was the connection that was communicated to me as being the one that this group was interested in making with the city of Cassin. So if you're interested, let me know. And if you're not, you know, I can let them know that we're completely in support of their project, but we won't be investing any staff time or any dollars.
Well, is this $150 to be, this be in the loop there?
That's for the first application.
Yeah, well, let's see. To fund the consultant that will develop the ranking application. That's the application fee, but as I understand it, we also need a master plan. So there could, there could be more dollars after that.
Can you find out what the potential is, what they're looking for as far as...
Of course.
Because I, I mean, I can see us supporting it on a very small scale, because the river doesn't go through Cassin, and I know we have the bike trail, but I just find it harder, because there's going to be somebody that gets on their canoe in Manorville and has their bike with them in their canoe, and then bikes to Cassin.
Right, like I said, I'd kind of been holding on.
Boy, Mike, but I'm just, I mean, I'm totally off, maybe I'm totally off base there. I just, I can see supporting it. It's great for the whole region, because we get people to drive through Cassin to get to Manorville. I get that, but if it's another one of these $30,000 government studies, and they want us to pay a higher amount because we have more population, I just don't see the sense.
Yeah. Yes, I, I know, I'm trying to think now, because I had been involved in, with one of these applications that didn't get approved. I can find out if you can apply and then do a master plan, based on whether or not your application was accepted. I can find that out for you. I can also invite, was the discount from the mayor of Orinoco? I can indicate to him that if they really want to court the city of Cassin, perhaps invite them to a future meeting to come sell you on the idea.
That would be, that would be better, so we could ask questions.
Okay, so that's what I'll do. I'll say I presented it to the council. There's an invitation to come, provide them with some more information. Okay, that looks a little...
Perfect, thanks. Good job. Thanks, Lonnie. Number two, new business, wine and 3.2 beer license from Miss Place Magnolia.
Okay, so first, we've been learning a little bit about wine licenses. So the wine license is actually going to come from the state, and that's an application that will forward on to the Department of Alcohol and Gambling, that's what it's called. So we'll, so the wine license is going to come from the state, and the 3-2 beer license is the one that I need for the council to approve. And what will happen is that with the combination of a wine license and a 3-2 license, they will be able to serve strong beer. So it's, it's just the way, it's just the way it happens in Minnesota.
Just in their rules act.
So, okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so I need approval of the 3-2 beer license for Miss Place Magnolia.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thanks. First and the second. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full same sign.
That one's kind of a side one, but do we have a limit on...
I was just connecting.
Actually, we did review this, so your ordinance 110.55 says that the council, in its sound discretion, can issue 3-2 beer license.
So there's no limit to...
No.
There's a, there's a state limit on it, but as long as you're within that state limit.
State limit, yes.
So what is the state limit?
I want to say that, am I right about that?
It refers to a limit in the statute.
I thought we had room for two more liquor licenses in town.
Well, we're talking about intoxicating liquor.
Why?
No, there's different licenses. So there's licenses for intoxicating liquor, which can be either on sale or off sale, or a combination of on sale and off sale, which could be similar to what West Concord has.
Just the basic cap, the classification of licenses, what we're talking about. So for this one, we're good. Motion carries.
We're good.
License is approved.
Yeah.
Whatever we have to do to get them.
We will verify we're within the limit.
Yeah, so they can explain that, so they can start serving Monday when we go in for that.
Well, if you want me to tomorrow.
Thank you, and thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have some copies for...
I got it. Okay, I gave it out to her.
Okay, thank you.
And we'd love to stay, but we have a lot of cleaning and... Thank you very much, everyone.
Yep, thank you. Have a good night. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor's report.
We got the minutes.
Oh, minutes, we added, yeah, sorry.
Number three, new business. Dan, you pulled that off the consent agenda.
Yeah, under old stone water tower agreement, if you go down to the ayes and nays, you'll see that you are both for and against this, if you're tied down.
Oh, I was flip-flopping. All right, thank you. If you can change that.
Make that correction.
And then, under new business, the mayor chiropractic, under there, we got ayes, Orstrom, Egler, McCurn, and Zielinski, and we got bucket stain. On the minutes, it was a three to two vote, is what we'd understood, if you listened to the video. But then, if you listen closer...
Yeah, then we have two people abstaining, I think.
About a coin voted.
No, right?
That's more than a day ago. I can't remember.
Anyway, I think...
It's really, really hard, and I would just ask, whenever there's a split vote, if we can make it very clear or take a roll call, because it's really hard to hear. It was hard to tell, too. If, when you said nay, it sounded like Poise said nay, and Doug said abstain.
Fair. Okay, so it was three to two, and that's where I realized my mistake later. When you abstain from that, we have to state what the conflict of interest is. Otherwise, it's a no. And I remember that from my mayor's association training, because they told me, we got elected to make decisions, not to say nay at one of those times. So, so it's...
Well, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, so unless you have a standing conflict of interest, it's either yes or no. So, and you can make that change also.
Yes.
So that one, I'll only vote one way on the...
Yes, I apologize.
You're not going to make a motion and then vote against it?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, as long as we're in that, no, McCurn suggested that city pay 30%. No, he suggested 70%. That's seven oh two.
Yep, that's flip-flopper, I'll turn.
That's flip-flopper.
Because that's where the assessment is, Anna.
Yep.
So then the 30% behind owner on the bottom, too, you'll have to change to 70.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October 25th meeting and amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Doug. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks. Dan, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I didn't mean to cause confusion.
No, that's good. Mayor's report. I was ill last week, so I didn't get a chance to attend the comprehensive planning meeting on Wednesday night. It was lightly attended, but yet, when you talked to the consultants, it was fantastic, because they did ember grow heights for the same meeting, which has a population of, I don't know how many, more tens of thousands of people show up. So he was very happy with our turnout. I wasn't, but, you know, glad, yeah. So there is still some stuff going on there. There'll be some things online. We could get some more of this.
Yeah, I have kits available.
I like those kits. Those were nice.
Yeah, and Dan could facilitate a group, Doug could facilitate a group, I could facilitate a group. I'm actually, Chris, I turned a packet over to Chris. Colin could facilitate a group, so.
So we hear anybody talking about different plans, or if we have that's available, if they want the information, we can get them.
Yeah.
I thought it was good info.
I actually will do the activity with the entire planning commission at their meeting Monday, and we'll do it with the staff tomorrow at our department head meeting. Well, I'll do it with the department heads.
Perfect. That's all I had on that. So let's go to I administration report. Cita with all.
Yeah, so Cita has provided us with the opportunity to renew our contract with them. I believe each of the EDA members had an opp, received an opportunity to evaluate our consultant, Rebecca Charles. I haven't seen those back yet. We could certainly, you know, table this and bring it back again after the evaluations come in. All right, but now you've seen it, you'll have a chance to do it.
This is the first of the year, yep.
Yeah, yes.
Give them the chance, because we just got those from...
Yes, you, I realized we just got some this week.
It's on Monday, so, okay.
So the figures that you had in here on this?
Right.
It's about $50 an hour that we have in that, huh?
Well, for the two days.
Two days, yeah. 16 hours a week, 52 weeks. And then the figure you had come to 49, 43.
Yeah, so that's...
I just thought I'd bring it up. That's kind of what we had in, in person.
Up slightly, you know, I can say included a little increase to cover increasing funds of next year. So it's a little higher than what we were paying this year.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right, so we'll review that.
Okay, so I'll bring it back under old business month?
Yep. I, too, snow hauling.
Snow hauling. So we've put this out for the two years, for the last two years. We had the same company submit the low bid for the last two years, and then we have not used them to haul any, no, for the last two years. So I asked Charlie just to go back to them and say, hey, would you haul for the same price that you bid last year, instead of putting it up for bid again, and then potentially not using anyone to do it. So, so I have been awarded as the low bidder in 2016 and 2017. He's willing to do it in 2018 for the same price that he bid in 2017. If you're fine with that, you know, that's how we'll move forward. If you're not fine with that, then we'll put it out for bid again. But I thought...
Do you remember the price?
$100 bucks an hour, I think.
So we just didn't use them because we didn't have the snow.
Right, we didn't have to have snow.
Which is a good problem.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't have enough snow to haul, so it's like he's been the winning bidder, but we haven't used him, and he's willing to do it for the same.
I thought he was a hundred, or was it on the...
I think it's 95 or 100, something like that.
Right in there.
I just...
So.
We'll not have to ask.
Yeah.
Before we make a decision.
You can throw it in and never let it go.
I have no problem with it. It makes sense to me. He's right here. He's been with us since... Yeah, it's the same as a... Because if you put it for bid, you never know what you'll get. Right. Do you need action on that, or is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Entertain a motion to approve snow hauling for 2018 to...
At the 2017, right.
At the 2017 bid rate.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Lonnie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Lonnie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries unanimously. G, engineers' report.
All right, thank you, Mary Council. No actions requested tonight from the council. It's more of an FYI. In your drop box, in your council packet, is the submittal we made in the end, that we've been talking at the last couple of meetings. So in that submittal is the actual application, so you can read through that. I won't go into it unless you'd like me to. And then there is the attachments, which are the pretty maps that we made it to help support our application. Included some maps, some costs, a letter of support from the police department of the county. And it gets more of an FYI if you want to get any information. I'm happy to share it with you, but everything is in line with what we talked about last meeting. Hope to hear back, hopefully, the end of this year, early 2018, if we reward this million dollar submittal, so.
I was, talked a little bit about this, that we were, I am for Grant for this, the chamber meeting today and school superintendent said he needed a letter of support, he'd be willing to do the same thing. You want that or anything would help or not?
I'll look and see if we can still get it in or not. I considered it, but the council, the school board meetings didn't line up, but I looked at it.
Yeah, I seen it there when I was reading it, the dates, I hope it's not like a further log it was submitted. But it was the third, was the deadline, it wasn't?
Yeah, last year.
Okay, so it's already done, all right. I told him I thought it was already done, so. All right, thanks, Brad, appreciate it. Personnel acknowledgement, part-time ice arena employees, Tate Carlson, Todd...
Yeah, oh, I know.
Macorat.
Gilrat.
And Tony Lopez.
So is that all we have to do, is just recognize them, or do we have to...
Well, by motion, you acknowledge that they've been hired, approve hiring them. Is that how it usually goes?
Yes, since we usually, we've put them on the consent agenda before because Howie goes through a lot of employees. And not that he has a lot, but these people don't get many hours, so he's like constantly hiring new ones.
These are their Samboody drivers and their part-time super, whatever they're doing generation, okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve...